Good evening, welcome to the Lower Frederick Township Board of Supervisors General Meeting for July 1st of 2025. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, roll call. The Board of Supervisors are all in attendance. Chuck Yizer, Supervisor Yizer will be on Zoom this evening. Our township manager is not with us this evening, and Chief Cass is taking his place to run Zoom for us this evening. The township meetings are recorded for the purpose of preparing the minutes, and the recording is destroyed after the minutes are approved. The meeting will be posted online on the Township YouTube channel. The link can be found on the Board of Supervisors page on the Township website. It is requested that all persons wishing to speak before the Board shall state their name, address, and the subject matter upon which they wish to speak for the record in the interest of facilitating the business of the Board. All persons addressing the Board shall be limited to three minutes unless such time is extended by the Chair for good cause. Individuals are requested to remain in their seat and to respect when other persons are speaking. The Board of Supervisors will provide a reasonable opportunity for citizens to comment on any non-agenda items after all agenda items have been addressed, but prior to the adjournment of the public meeting. Okay, this evening's administrative actions, we have meeting minutes from February 4th, February 25th, March 4th, and March 25th. Has everyone had a chance to look at them? Are there any questions? Okay, can I get a motion to pass the minutes? Also move. Okay, I will second. Alls in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, this evening's treasurer's report, I guess I will give that a stab this evening. Just the highlights, okay. Fund balances, as of June 30th of 2025, the general fund has $1,180,796. General capital fund has $51,482. The hydrant fund has $21,066. Sewer fund, $446,597. ARPA COVID relief fund has $22,967. CD general fund, $1,345,000. CD for the sewer fund is $200,000. Liquid fuels fund, $500,413. Developers escrow is $505,527. The open space fund is $301,580. Sewer fund escrow, $53,215. Sewer capital fund, $149,213. And the CD open space for $100,000. Okay, so the highlights on top of those balances, the Springmount sidewalk project was completed in May. Final payment released for the Springmount sidewalk project will be made. That's on the agenda this evening. And this was a Monaco 2040 grant project. The 2025 oil and chip project was completed in May. The remainder of the material costs will be paid. Does anyone have any questions? Next is the payment of our bill list for May 31st through June 27th of 2025. From the general fund is $148,720.41. General fund capital, $59,481.61. Sewer fund, $39,354.84. Liquid fuels fund, $95,781.20. Open space fund, $3,497.56. And the ARPA COVID relief funds for $87,171.58. We'll now move on to our professional and staff reports.
Beg your pardon?
Yeah, we gotta pay the bills. My apologies.
May I ask a question before we get into it?
Absolutely.
The liquid fuels fund, the $95,781.20, is entirely the AMS for their work on our roads. Are we okay to pay this bill? Are we satisfied with their work and response to issues?
I'll take that to help.
Yes.
So what you're paying for tonight is the emulsion. I believe you already paid Martin Quarry for the stone. What, the bill that hasn't come before you yet is for the equipment, the labor and equipment to actually place the material. We did have a problem on girl off-road. We are having a problem on girl off-road. I have been in touch with Asphalt Maintenance Solutions. As I mentioned at the last meeting, they've been out multiple times already to add stone to the road to soak up that extra emulsion. They will continue to do that as long as there's any bleed-through, and they are going to come back in the fall and do repairs. I confirmed with AMS that that is at no cost to the township. They are standing behind their work. So what you're paying for tonight is the actual emulsion material, and I suspect that next month's meeting, you're going to be looking at the bill for the equipment and labor.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Okay, can I get a motion to pay the bills this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Motion is made by Terry Sax.
I will second.
Seconded by Marla Hexter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, it's unanimous, lady. We're going to move on to professional and staff reports. Carol, engineer.
Thank you. I'll jump over the Springmount Road culvert since that appears later on the agenda. Arcadia Station, the landscaper has planted replacement trees and shrubs throughout the development, and the trees in open space A are now under the maintenance period. At Farmview Estates, Little Road paving was done in June, overseen by the PennDOT Inspector. We raised a concern about the pavement profile at One Manhole, and the contractor has agreed with PennDOT's permission to rework that area. So that will happen. The contractor this week is paving gravel pike over the waterline trench between Wawa and Little Road, and work on the walking trail is also scheduled this week. At Melbourne Hill, interior site work continues, including storm sewer work and gas line installation. I do note that the paving of gravel pike over the waterline trench that goes between Little Road and Melbourne Hill is proposed in late summer or early fall, so it's going to be a little longer till that trench is addressed. Chip seal of township roads, I already talked about, so I'll jump over that. Willow 2 on Smith Road, there was a sketch plan submitted for review. It was presented to the Planning Commission. You'll probably hear about that in their report. The other items on my report have either not changed, or they just deal with individual grading permits, so I will pause there unless there are any questions from the Board.
I do not have any questions. Chuck, do you have any questions?
No.
This is not about any of these on the report, but on the sidewalk, should we have some kind of a opening ceremony and have the county here? I know we talked about that last year, and now it's already open.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. I think that would be a great thing for the township to do.
What does the rest of the board think about that?
I think that's a good idea.
They did support the project, and...
Get Jason and Becky on top of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I've already mentioned it to Jason and also floated the idea past Carol at the last planning, after the last planning commission meeting, so I think it's the right thing to do, yeah.
Yeah.
I offered to bring the ceremonial scissors. I have three pairs.
All right, well then I'll follow up with Jason just to make sure that gets filed through.
Sorry, I'm just noticing that comments are running across the screen. Is there any way you can get that off? So it's kind of distracting.
Is that us?
No, it's other people. It's kind of...
It's a transcription. That's been running the last few meetings.
Oh, okay.
Can people on Zoom see it? Or is just us?
Yes, no, we can see it on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, next up on our agenda is the police report. Chief?
Thank you. For the month of June 2025, we had 336 calls for service, 21 traffic enforcement details were conducted, 78 traffic stops, with 59 citations issued for various motor vehicle code violations. Members of the police department have completed their mandatory legal updates as required by MOPAC, Pennsylvania Municipal Police Officers Training Commission. Several of the members of the police department have completed their firearms qualifications. The rest of us will be completing firearms taser over the next few weeks. Two of the members of the police department attended training for digital forensics, which is for cellular and other handheld devices. This training is invaluable to allow the police department to conduct prosecuted criminal activity which originates via an online platform. Last month, I spoke to you about the sentencing for Thomas DiGardo for the sexual assault. He was sentenced in Montgomery County last Thursday, and he'll be spending anywhere from 18 to 36 months in a state correction prison. Once he, upon whenever he decides, or whenever he is released, he will also ask the registrar to make him a law violator for the rest of his life. I attached speed data from one of the sign boards from gravel pike in Meng Road. As you can see with the paperwork that the Board was provided, it was effective about 75% of the time to slow people down as they approached the intersection with Springmount Road. And in your packet that was provided are two news releases for an aggravated assault incident and a DUI arrest, which we took care of over the previous month. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
I don't have a question, but on my morning walk the other day, I saw the police, saw the chief catching people at a stop sign. So please stop at the stop sign because they will give you a ticket.
Were you sitting on cemetery?
I'm sorry.
It was girl off and yurger.
Oh, girl off and yurger, okay. Let me let it out of the bag. Sorry about that. Okay, thanks, Chief. Okay, next is the fire company. Do we have anyone here from the fire company? Okay, ambulance, I don't believe we have that yet.
You do.
We do?
I have it. I can read it.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
For Plymouth ambulance, for May 2025, there's 13 total calls in Lower Frederick Township. Year-to-date is 111 calls. For the primary coverage area, for the month, it was 67. Year-to-date total, 389. Mutual aid outside of the primary coverage area, for the month, it was 26, and to the year-to-date was 126 calls.
Okay, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, we're moving on to public works. I would be happy to read that out unless you want to.
Sure.
Jason?
For the public works report for June 2025, Public Works Department performed the following work in addition to routine operations, managed the mowing contractors, performed two sewer inspections, road mowing was completed in township, new handicap spaces were made at Cuddy Park, wood guard rail was repaired at Cuddy Park, Public Works assisted with the Spring Fest setup, filled potholes on township roads, Foley Park Playground mulch was removed and new mulch was installed, wood guard rail was repaired at Foley Park, sewer lines were inspected by Sewer Specialty Services as part of the I&amp;I project, the new shipping containers were delivered to the Public Works facility, the sludge holding tank at sewer plant was emptied and cleaned, saw cutting was completed around storm inlets that are needing repairs.
Okay. Does anyone know when the fencing is going to get put in? Carol, do you know when the fencing is going to be put in public works? No? Okay. Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, there is a zoning report. I would be happy to read that if you're not comfortable, Chief.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so zoning report for June of 2025. Building permits received, there were nine, zoning nine. Building permit approved, 16. Zoning permits approved, 17. Building completed, seven. Zoning completed, one. Continue to assist code enforcement investigating property concerns, violations, and assist with applications, issued the following permits. Resale UNOs were six, burning permits, 16, driveway permits, two, and online pumping. Pumping reports received were four. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to our Township Board and Commission reports, the EAC.
Yes, I am here, Diane Jorin from the EAC. We did not have a quorum for our last meeting. Sometimes when zoning meetings happen at the same time, our members can't zoom in. But they did have a discussion, and I just wanted to talk about all the fun things we're going to have to do in July. So on July 10th, at the township meeting, the Perkyomen Watershed Conservancy will be doing a rain garden presentation, and they will be selling rain garden plants, but they can only take cash. So bring your cash and come on out. We've been working with the Perkyomen EAC, and they will be having a rain barrel workshop on July 17th at their township building. And the last activity I want to tell you about is a bird walk on July 13th on the Rails to Trails that starts at the Hollywood entrance. So I hope you guys will spread the word and all come out. Have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you, Diane. Does anyone have questions for Diane? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the Open Space Committee.
Evening. The Open Space Committee met on June 11th. The main topic of discussion at this meeting concerned the easement for the Land Messer property, which during the meeting, the committee members reached a consensus of the need or the desire to communicate to the township their support for having this easement extended, or for trail property work along the property to commence with, given the fact that that easement is scheduled to expire this year. I understand that this matter is on the meeting agenda for tonight, so further discussion will be taking place on that matter. In addition to the land mess discussion, we also reviewed the information table hosting that we had last month on primary day. We felt that that was successful overall. We want to continue to do that during various events and programs, both throughout the township and at the township building. And lastly, we discussed our ongoing efforts to work with natural lands to collaborate on a volunteer event this fall to do property work at the Stonehill Greenway, and we're hoping that that will be the first additional volunteer days that our committee will host moving forward. That is my report. I can answer any questions, or try to answer any questions that anyone might have.
I don't have any questions at this time, Andrew. Does anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Next up is the Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission met on June 19th. There were four major topics which we discussed at the meeting, first of which was a sketch plan review for the Willows, which is a proposed development out at Smith and Berger Lane. It was a sketch plan. For those that are not familiar with the sketch plan, a sketch plan is an opportunity for somebody who has a proposal to come before the Planning Commission to get feedback, critique, discuss their plan, and get a feel for how the township would perceive of that if it was to progress to a preliminary and final application. The plan was presented by Smith Development LLC. As a matter of the public record, has no connection with Phil Smith, who's talking currently. But we went through the process of looking at the proposal based on the review letter that Carol had provided to us. I think it was dated June 10th. There were a number of issues that she brought to our attention that we felt were significant. Amongst those were the improvements necessary at Berger Lane, the density of the development as proposed in the sketch plan was way in excess of what the site ought to have. Obviously, those who are familiar with that location, there's a basin, a stormwater detention basin down along Game Farm Road and Smith that has a lot of problems associated with. We felt that that had to be a paramount issue that was addressed, especially in view of the flooding conditions that have taken place in the past along that mine-run corridor. So all said, we provided the applicant, or the proposed applicant, if you will, a chance to interact with us. They took down our suggestions and comments, and we're grateful for receiving them. They are going to come back at a future time and have a revised plan that came closer to where we felt they ought to be from the onset. The next topic which we took up was the finalization of the artisan development, which again is out at Smith and Centennial, and that development had a need for sewage planning. So we, in October of last year, went through a review of the sewage facilities module for A, the component that requires the Planning Commission to look at and react to, which we did in October. We had some comments. They came back. The DEP came back with a need for our acknowledgement that is, issues were either addressed, or we were aware of solutions that were, I assume, necessary to further their completion of that sewage planning. So basically, it was just an acknowledgement of their interaction with that form which we had sent back in October, and that completed that discussion. We then went on to the Land Messer Trail easement. That will be discussed later in the meeting, but as a matter of background, I kind of, since I had been present at the time that the Land Messers did their land development, gave a little bit of a summary from the Planning Commission's perspective. I had provided the planners with the minutes from the meeting in 2003 where we had an active conversation about that trail, and we, as a Planning Commission, felt that it was necessary to inform the Board of Supervisors that we recognize how difficult the trail easements are to obtain, how valuable certain trail easements in certain areas are to the overall goals of our township. So we figured the best route to keep the supervisors abreast of that was to formulate a letter, draft a letter, send it to the Township Board of Supervisors explaining our position and support for the preservation of that easement, and we're hopeful that that is a successful outcome. The last item which the Planning Commission addressed at the meeting was that of the general discussion about, you know, improvements to perhaps zoning and other ordinances for the Zieglerville Village area. That's a VMU district, and there are some issues that we feel that perhaps in the future, we ought to have a way to tighten up some of the language in the ordinances and suggest some changes to the zoning code that may be beneficial to helping further the goals of making a very special village into the future. So one of the outcomes of that discussion was that we felt that perhaps because it's kind of a broad-based undertaking that we ought to request from the Board of Supervisors, the ability to form a working group, and the working group, as we envisioned it, might be proposed of Planning Commission members, but also representatives from the Parks Board as well as the Open Space Board. So those committees would have a chance to directly input their ideas and help, you know, facilitate a better set of recommendations from the planners in regard to that, you know, the outcome of the working group's, you know, work or activities. So that kind of concluded the meeting, and I'd certainly be happy to entertain any questions and do my best to answer them for you.
Does anyone have any questions for Phil? Okay, seeing none at this time, we can move on to Parks and Rec.
Perfect. It's green. Wonderful. Okay, Katie Lewis from the Park Board. First of all, we just wanted to thank you guys again for approving the community art program or the initiative. We have reached out to Melissa, and it's in planning phases at this point. We had our Spring Festival on June 7th. It was successful despite the weather was a little rainy, but we did have a good turnout, and we got a lot of good feedback. So that was a successful event. We don't have our July meeting, so we don't have a lot of business to report out on, but we do have a lot of events this month. Tomorrow, we actually have the reschedule of last week's concert, the first concert, so the Left Edge tomorrow night at Cuddy Park at 7:00. Then Thursday, we have Stories in the Park with the PV Library over at Cobal, and that's from 10:00 to 11:00. And then Saturday, July 12th, we have Book Club from 10:00 to 12:00 at Cuddy, and we're going to be discussing Vera Wong's Unsolicited Advice for Murderers by Jesse Sutanto. Then Saturday, July 19th, we have a wildlife walk-around through the Perkyomen Pacers Walking Group, and that's going to be at Upper Schuylkill Valley Park. And then to round out the month, on Thursday, July 31st, from 7:00 to 9:00, we have our second concert, and that's going to be the Smooth Riders. So, any questions?
You're very busy.
We are very busy.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
I just have one question. You usually have an ice cream truck at your concerts?
Unfortunately, we will not have the ice cream truck tomorrow because it's the rain date, but we do have some free snacks that we picked up from Costco that we'll have for residents.
Because though with that ice cream and waffle, that was really good.
Yeah. Good news is, Marla, we got the Waffle Cabin for the August concert. So as long as we don't get rained out in August, we will get Waffle Cabin. So.
Terrific. Thanks, Katie.
Thanks.
Okay, we can start off with our business here. The agenda first is the Land Messer Trail Easement, 16 Big Road, survey authorization and consideration to construct the trail. And Peter, if you would, do the honors.
Yes. So just give a little background on this. The, back in 2003, this property underwent land development approval, and as part of that process, seven waivers were asked for and granted, and the Board at the time stressed, quote-unquote, stressed the importance of accommodating the pedestrians in the village region, and conditioned a granting of these waivers upon the applicant providing an easement for a trail along Swamp Creek. It was agreed that the trail easement would roughly follow the 100-year floodplain line and would be shown as a 50-foot wide entirely within the 100-year floodplain line and be shown, well, typo here. Period. Well, I did right there. The, as such, an easement was prepared and signed by all the parties, including Mr. Land Messer. This easement was, although it was signed in April, April 21st of 2004, it was not recorded, with the recorded of deeds until August 13th, 2004. This is important because this easement agreement contained a provision that stated that the township needed to install this easement within 24, sorry, 21 years of the date of recording of the easement. Otherwise, the agreement and granted easement shall become null and void. This is the reason why this matters on the agenda before the Board tonight. In order for the township to install this easement, we need to have a In order for the township to install this easement, we need to have a survey done to lay it out specifically upon the ground. And then once, if and when that survey is then complete, the Township Public Works will need to go in and install the easement. The easement agreement doesn't state in any way, shape, or form how the easement is supposed to be constructed, what it's supposed to be made of, not the easement, the trail, or of any description. It just says that the trail needs to be installed upon, within the easement area. That being said, I, you know, it's my opinion that the township can install the easement just as a grassed walking path, i.e., we just mow in the area, you know, or we could put down wood chips, all the way up to, you know, obviously, you could put down macadam, although in the floodplain, I don't know whether or not we want to do that. So that's what's before the board tonight, is we have a proposal by the Township Engineer for the cost of surveying the easement. And she needs to know whether or not she can move forward with this at this time in order to get it arranged with enough time prior to August 13th so that the public works could actually then install the easement prior to August 13th. So if there's any further questions, I can answer them, or Carol, one or the other.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Any concerns on the board?
I have a question. Since I'm the property owner--
Oh, Mr. Land Messer? Could you do me a favor? Come up to the mic?
Absolutely. It's funny how the guy from the Planning Commission--
No. Here it is.
Can you state your name and address, please?
My name's Tim Land Messer, and I am the property owner at what we call Sixth Cross Road, but it's really 16 Big Road. It's-- Mission said how they obtained this trail easement, because it was basically, you know, widen girl off-road, put sidewalks up for full length, or give a trail easement. So at the time, it was a no-brainer to give a trail easement. The only concerns I have is, number one, my lawyer's looking into when this was actually reported. And in here was pretty specific on it had to be delineated so that when the people are on the trail, they can't walk on our property. So that needs to be specified as to what, you know, the township plans.
It's very odd that they waited 21 years, and they haven't obtained one of their trail easement from anyone. So if you install this trail, where's it going? How do people get into the trail? Where are people parked?
So all those questions need to be answered before someone goes on our property and decides they were going to start surveying something. So, I mean, that kind of stuff should be labeled exactly how they plan on accommodating that. You have a guardrail--
You have a guardrail that needs to be taken down--
--in the area. Does this thing not work? We're in the wired state here in Dover Frederick. But that's the concerns that, as a property owner, I have. A lot of liability falls on us. If someone goes off of that trail, walks off, and they're on our property, we're liable for that. So I don't really understand why, all of a sudden, in 21 years, at the last wee bit hours, you're going to try to rush in the trail in a month and a half. Can someone explain that?
Well, I mean, certainly from a legal standpoint, if the board doesn't do this, the easement goes away. So, you know, certainly, one of the things that if we eliminate the 21-year deadline, then the easement's not going to go in until it's needed.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. So that, I mean, that's, to be honest, I've never seen an easement like this with such a deadline on it. It just doesn't make sense. But, you know, that's, you know, that's the reason why, is, you know, the, I can't explain what happened the previous 20 years, but what's going on now is, you know, we got, the board's got to either do this or say, okay, what this was bargained for, we're going to give it up.
Yeah, but my point is, is that there wasn't, there wasn't any bargain. The bargain was street trees along Girl Off Road, road widening on Girl Off Road going to a one-lane bridge. So it's like, no one on the Planning Commission, I guarantee he'll remember that, everyone was like, oh my God, we can't widen Girl Off Road to have it go down to a one-lane bridge. So it's not like you're losing any bargain. And as far as street trees, we installed street trees down the whole side. So it doesn't make--
This was something the township asked for. You know, they clearly granted the waivers conditioned upon this easement being granted. So at the time--
Which honestly, I'm from Skipback, so that's where I live, and the trail system there is great. They have a plan. It gets you places. I mean, it's great. I mean, no one, I don't think anyone in their right mind wants to walk on Girl Off Road, but they're going to turn off Girl Off Road onto a trail to nowhere. And that's the, that's the part, that's the part that, like, is alarming, is, okay, they're going to go down there, and then the trail easement, whatever's 50 feet, then we own on the other side of it, which is the creek, so they're going to go down to the creek. And then I have to call the police and say, hey, I got trespassers on my property. And then he has to go out, and he has to decide, well, wait a second, you're not on the trail? So it opens up a can of worms. I'm not, I'm not necessarily against the trail, but I'm against the fact that it's a trail to nowhere. That my point--
Like I said, if the 21 years is removed--
The problem, the reason my attorney did that, and I, I didn't know anything. I was 28 years old when I did this. Like, it's hard to believe, but, you know, actually, 30, 30 years old when I did this. So I didn't know anything. And basically, what he said is, a lot of these properties have these open-ended easements, and he didn't feel that, he felt that if they want to build the trail, they're going to build it. Like, it's, they're going to make, they're going to see that trail connection, and then there was another property over there that they got a trail connection, and they were going to actually make it happen. That's what, I mean, ultimately, I think that would benefit the township, but there's no path for that. The way the conditions are back there, no one's going to be able to get back up to the village. It doesn't make any sense. It just, like I said, it's, I mean, whether, and look, if they had a plan, I mean, back then, Mr. Manning had a plan, and other people had different plans, and they were trying to incorporate everything in one, but it, obviously, it didn't work. So, I mean, that's--
Well, let me chime in here a little bit. I think sidewalks may have also been waived, too. So, as a planner, you can never rely on everything happening at once. That's a fool's errand. You pick, you pick up easements when you have the opportunity, and hopefully someday, you can put them all together. So it's not unusual, the township, you look at their 1998 Open Space Plan, right? And that has a lot of people's name on it from all types of political parties, and that was their objective, is to try to collect easements along the Swamp Creek to someday, who knows when, have a trail. However your situation went down, it was differently. As our lawyer described, you put us in a bind, or whoever made this agreement years ago put us in a bind. I'm happy just having the easement. Make it in perpetuity. There'll be no trail there for a very long time, if ever. And then this problem is solved, as far as I'm concerned.
There's no reason for me to do that.
I understand that, and, but you're for, I explained to you personally when I spoke to you last fall, this is not my preferred option, but it is an option that I'm willing to take, because I don't think we should be losing an easement. I think you should, as a planner, as somebody who cares about the community, you collect easements when you have the opportunity.
Yeah, but the point is, you do something with those easements.
It may take a long time. It may take 50 years for that to happen.
That's my point, is--
Right, but you don't, no, Tim, Tim, you can't just--
--plan.
You have to, you have to look out in the future.
Yeah, but take the easement and do something with it. That's the whole point. Like, you have these open-ended easements that, like, anyone can do in 50 years, or 60 years, or 70 years. It's like, listen, you have your opportunity. Get the other easements and connect it, and go. But that's the problem, you can't get those connections.
Not right now, no. Who knows whether they'll come?
Exactly. Well, like I said--
I can't, you can't, a bit, Tim, I have been doing this for a long time, and I know you've been on Planning Commission. You can never predict when anything's going to happen. We can all look at a piece of property and say, oh, it's going to be untouched for 50 years, and next thing you know, there's a developer going up there. You get things when you have the opportunity. That's the only thing--
But you build them--
--can move you forward.
When you get the easement, you build them.
You can't, you don't always have all the pieces. You don't always have all the pieces at any given time. But, you know--
And what's the point of building this?
I'm just telling you based on, I'm just telling you based on the way I have seen things going in the past 20-some years, it's just the way you have to do it. We don't have a lot of money to go out and just buy lots and lots of stuff. Skipback dropped a lot of money on some of those trails, and I commend them for that. We don't have that opportunity. We collect things, we try to get things when we have the opportunity. That's all I have to say.
All I can say is, you got, you got no plan on where anything's going, and you have a plan on opening up a guardrail and putting a trail in there that is going to invite people into our property with no, no, like, risk, regard for, like, our land, and those people come down to the creek, and now they're trespassing. And if someone falls, who's that fall on? Us. And, and I just don't think that, you know--
Well, maybe you should have just put in the sidewalks, then.
To where? Where are the sidewalks? That's, that's another thing. Great, I wanted to do sidewalks. I wanted to do sidewalks along 73, because all the water comes in that house, goes right into the basement. Your engineer said, no, you can't have curbing there, because they don't, the water will just run down to the next person. So I wanted to do concrete sidewalks and curb, but they didn't want it, because that would have created an issue where it had to be a flat walkway with the, with the pavement. What's the point?
Could I just step in here real quick? It is my understanding that the only thing we're moving forward with here tonight is to send Carol out to monument out the easement, and I think there might be a misunderstanding about construction of a trail. We don't have any intentions at this time in taking out a guardrail--
Well, the problem is--
--or giving public access. I mean, is that what we're talking about? I was under the impression it's, we're just going to be maintaining that.
Well, we got to lay out the easement, and then we have to install or construct a trail within that easement, which my recommendation is we just mow it in.
Right. There's no guarantee that there's going to be public access to that right now. There's--
No, but my point is, is you can't just call a mowed area a trail. Like, that's not, that's not, constructing a trail is not just mowing a section through someone's property.
I know of numerous trails by Natlands where they just mow them.
Yeah, especially being in a floodplain. And there's, there's no, there's, we're not going to advertise it or make public access.
I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. But according to this document, which my attorney's looking to see when it actually was recorded, because anyone could stamp this thing, 2004, so we're actually looking in to see when it is recorded. But the thing is, is it has to be constructed. You can't just have, like, like, open up an area, you can't, you can't have a trail where you have to hop a guardrail, or you have to go up an embankment and, and, and get to the trail. Like, that, that area is not, like, simple to just walk in. That's my point, is, like, it makes no sense, it makes no sense to try to rush to construct a trail to nowhere because of, of, you know, losing the trail easement. Like, it's not going to go anywhere anyway.
So is there an option on the table that you would leave us the easement in perpetuity and just leave it alone?
Yeah--
And nothing gets constructed?
There is some, there is probably some way that that can probably work. But that, I have to sit down with my attorney and find out exactly what I got to do and do that kind of stuff. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it to the meeting, because I just found out on Friday that I was on the, I was on the agenda. So I didn't really have that much time to plan for this thing.
Mr. Land Messer, can I ask who your attorney is?
Neil Perlstein is who wrote this originally.
Okay. Could you, if I give you my card, could you have it?
Absolutely.
Please give me a call?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I didn't have time. I tried reaching out to him with the holiday and everything else. He couldn't make it. But, like I said, it's, I was never against the trail. It's not, I'm from Skipback. I love the trails. My kids use them all the time. I wouldn't have any of my kids walk on any of these roads. Girl off especially. It's like, so I understand what you want to do with these trails, and I understand the value of them, but there, you have to come up with a plan where you can start acquiring certain things to get your people around. And Skipback, Skipback doesn't pay for these trails. All the people that develop around them do. And then they very nicely ask, can we get this connection? It's not that difficult, but they don't, for a better word, just like, you know, just kind of haphazardly be like, oh yeah, we'll just put a trail easement here. Like they say, there's going to be a trail there. You know what I mean? And they, and they blacktop it. They put up fence. So it's like, here's the trail. And that's my point. So like I said, I don't, I'm not 100% against the trail, it's just the principle of, all of a sudden, it's expiring, and you're going to mow in a trail. It just, to me, doesn't seem, it doesn't seem right. And like I said, 50-foot wide, and we own, where that easement is, we own on the other side of that easement.
I understand where you're coming from.
So they could literally walk off the trail right down to our creek, drowned, and it's on us.
Go ahead, Marla.
Yeah, sir, so we understand where you're coming from, but where we're coming from, we have a legal agreement to do this by a certain date. So in order to protect our interests, we want to ensure that if nothing else happens by August 13th, we can put the trail in. Now, we, I think all of us would prefer to not have to do that--
Well, I can tell you--
Can you let me finish?
Yep.
I think all of us would prefer to not do that in the next six weeks. I think our preference would be if that easement is done as perpetuity, which our solicitor said normally they are done that way. So in five, or 10, or 20, or 30, or however many years it takes us to get the other connections, we would get that full trail in. That would be our preference. If it is your preference, too, we hope that between now and August 13th, you can sign that agreement, and then problem solved. So it's kind of on you now.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but here's the other thing. Nothing in this township gets approved in a month and a half. And all of a sudden, you're going to survey, you're going to survey, install the trail, and everything documented.
Well, that's not what we're here to discuss. I mean, we have two options before us. You can do nothing, and we will move ahead with our legal obligations, or you can agree to do it in perpetuity, and nothing will happen. So I think it's kind of in your lap now--
I'm not agreeing to perpetuity. I mean--
That's, that's up to you. It's up to you.
Yeah, I'm not doing that. I mean, again, there's no reason to have these open-ended easements. So there was a reason why he didn't want to do it 21 years ago, and I'm going to go with that. Now, do we extend it or do something like that? That's a different story, but--
Extending it would mean that when we have, as you say, all the connections, that is when the trail would go in. It could be in a year, it could be in 50 years.
No, I would probably have it where it's extended for X amount of time, and you have this amount of time to make it right. I mean, that's the thing. It's not, it's, it's just, it just doesn't make any sense to have these, have these, you know, things out there that, you know, you need to figure out exactly where you want everything to go, and as certain properties get developed, you need to get the connections. And, and there's, you had 21 years to do it. So like I said, I don't understand why, all of a sudden, you're afraid to lose an easement, but you haven't moved on the easement. So what does it even matter?
Sir, the reality is, Skipback has a much, 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 much larger budget than us. They have a multimillion-dollar open space fund to put trails in. They have much bigger developments. To compare us to Skipback is unfair. We're a tiny township with a tiny budget, and things take time. And that's all I have to say. And again, you have some options ahead of you, so I guess we'd encourage you to talk to your solicitor and decide which way you want to go.
Yeah. I mean, that's all I can tell you.
I mean, I'll just throw into the mix as an option that even if the township does, you know, follow through and do the easement, you know, if you think otherwise after the fact, maybe this fall or later this summer, and say, yeah, okay, you know, I'm willing to give you an impermeability easement, we can, you know, just make sure nobody goes on the property, and it'll go back to the way it was before. I think that's a possibility, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Solicitor.
Yes.
Okay, then let me ask the chief a question. So you guys build this-- So, you guys build this trail. It's a fifty-foot easement. It's delineated, surveyed, whatever. Someone comes down there off that trail easement and they're on my property. Can I call you up and have them arrested for trespassing?
As long as your property's posted, no trespassing.
Yeah, so I can post that property down there, no trespassing. And the second they're on, off that delineated easement, I can call the police and they can be arrested.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's it. So, now you're gonna have, uh, other stuff to comment on your monthly stuff that you've done. But, that's my, my point is, is we take a lot of pride in our property and, and, and we keep it really nice. And I don't want that to change based on how that easement's laid out or what's going on there. And that's my whole point. If, if kids or whoever just are gonna go down to hang out by the creek, which it's a beautiful place down there, and, you know, have that access through girl off-road to do that, I don't wanna have to be monitoring who's down there and everything else. It's just that, to me, it, it's, as a property owner, I don't think any, I don't think any one of you would want that as a property owner, that liability, or have to worry about, you know, what's going on in the back of your property. So, like I said, I'm not against trails. I, I'm not gonna compare it to Skipback. It, it, they have a wonderful trail system. And, and they had, they had a plan. And they, 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 you know, looked for different connections that they could make and, and figured out exactly where it would be best to get pedestrians to different parts of the township. And I don't see how from this trail easement, anyone's getting to anywhere worthwhile, except fishing, uh, in the Swamp Creek, which they can't do anyway because they have to walk off the easement. So I, I don't understand that. But, like I said, we'll see, we'll see what my attorney says and we'll go from there.
Yeah, just, just listening to, to everything and, Tim, thanks for coming. And a lot of the things you said do make sense. And I appreciate you take pride in your property. It's one of the nicest ones we have, uh, commercial properties in our area. I mean, again, the frustration is twenty-one years. I don't think when they wrote it, anyone thought we'd be here twenty years later talking about it. But we're up against it. So, tonight's gonna talk about an expense, surveying it. Meanwhile, you're gonna, having expense researching the timing. I guess to Peter, to make all these things come together and not have to survey it. How quickly, how quickly would we need an agreement? Whether it's a, you know, number of years extension. But we wouldn't have to physically survey it, physically put a trail in.
I think actually that's a Carol, a Carol question. As far as preparing an amendment to this easement, that's a, to be honest, quite a simple, quick document to do so.
Would we need to vote on that? Or could it just be a private, an agreement between, at your direction to get it completed?
We would, uh, yes. Like anything else, we would eventually need to, to vote on it. And so that would be, you know, probably, we would want to have it by our August regular meeting. So it could be voted on and then recorded before August thirteenth, just to be safe.
So it's also my understanding that this is a smaller piece to a bigger picture. Can, uh, anyone else speak to that potentially? Phil?
Certainly. Obviously, the township has worked very hard to make connections between our villages, between our historic sites, between points of interest that the public would wanna be able to access. We've set it as goals in our comprehensive plan. We have a connection plan that also illustrates connections that we'd like to make along the Swamp Creek. So this is not a new idea. It's something that's been in the process for a number of years. It's also been, uh, it's also worth noting that we've acquired easements after your easement was acquired along the Swamp Creek to accomplish that. And Chuck Reiser, Supervisor Reiser, is very correct. This thing does not come together in the blink of an eye. Takes a lot of planning. It takes, you know, getting, sitting down with property owners that are willing to work with us, property owners that have land developments that are, you know, interested in pursuing their land development or are willing to give up an easement because of that. Consequently, it's, it's, it's an important thing for a municipality of ours size and type to be able to do this methodically and also not lose what we have gained. So, all said, you know, it, it's, it's, in my opinion, and I think it would be backed up by the various commissions and so forth that have worked on this kinda thing, that, you know, this is an important component not to lose. And I think that the possibility of extending the easement as a easement in perpetuity would be a wonderful outcome. I don't like to see things rushed. I'm a planner myself. I like to see things done intelligently. But I also recognize that losing an opportunity like this, or an entitlement, actually, that we've had up to this point, is just gonna be a devastating blow to what we've been trying to accomplish as far as connections and trails and, uh, ability of the public to be able to, you know, move freely and safely in different areas. So I contend that, you know, the, the board would be prudent and wise to be able to try to make sure that this is not lost through a bureaucratic delay of any kind and, and, you know, get the best outcome that we can do under the circumstances that are before us. Does that answer your question?
Thank you, Phil.
And, and just in response to Terry, what you said, that would be, in my opinion, the best outcome as well. But I don't think we have another three weeks to wait for that to happen. So I think we still have to vote to go ahead with the, um, survey. And hopefully, if in the next week or ten days, the lawyers can talk and a decision can be made, then we wouldn't have to do it. But, uh, can you correct me if I'm wrong? Do we have another three weeks to push this back? Sorry, Carol?
Yeah, so if it's authorized this evening, it'll get in the schedule for survey. It'd happen in about two weeks. If we waited till the workshop meeting, we will be out of time, frankly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There's nothing that says that we have to give public access to this, is there?
I'd like to look at that a little further, but generally, no.
Okay, so if we could-
What was your question? Or, I just wanna make sure the answer aligned with what I thought you were asking.
We don't have to give public access to this right now. There's nothing-
That's what I, I would like to look at, the easement agreement.
Okay.
Again, um, to see whether or not, once we make the trail, we need to keep, you know, open the trail up to the public in order to maintain the easement. But, just as a general answer, once we have, you know, once we have easements, you know, that's a property interest that we control and we're not oblig, usually obligated to open them to the public. You know, that's our decision when they become open to the public. Even if we make a trail on there, we could say, no, it's not ready for the public to be on there.
That's, that's kind of what I thought. So, un, under that assumption, if you would look into that a little bit further-
Yes.
To get confirmation, I think that I would feel comfortable moving forward this evening with making, um, the motion to survey that the township engineer, go out and, and, uh, survey the property in an amount not to exceed two thousand dollars and to authorize the construction of the trail. Once the survey is completed, in the interim, Peter, you can get in touch with Mr. Landmaster's attorney as well as finding out that other information.
Yes.
Okay, I will make that motion.
I will second.
I've made the motion. Supervisor Hexter made the second. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Okay, motion passes, four to one.
Do we need to clarify what we're okay with as far as perpetuity versus an extension at this meeting? Since we won't have time to talk about it later.
I believe that-
We, we can talk about it. Let me talk to Mr. Landmaster's attorney, see what the options are. And, you know, we, you know, we can put something together for the work session in July if we get to that.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Thank you, Tim. Next on our agenda this evening is zoning hearing board application for Schwenck Road between two oh six and two ten Schwenck Road.
I think this is me also.
I believe this is you as well.
Okay, two seconds. So this, this is a, an application to the zoning hearing board seeking approximately a half dozen variances in order to construct a single-family home upon this empty lot at two oh eight Schwenck Road. The issue here is the lot is undersized. And, uh, we also, in this zoning district, require public water or sewer, which is not an option for this particular lot. The applicant, uh, filed, uh, for these variances. And, uh, I believe in May, this was originally discussed by the board, at which meeting the board voted to, uh, have my firm appear at this zoning hearing and oppose, uh, these variances. The, um, when the applicant found out, uh, that the township was opposing this, they continued the hearing in an attempt to work out, in an attempt to, to work out, some sort of agreement with the township whereby the township would, uh, drop its opposition to this application. What the applicant has come up with is, uh, they are proposing to undertake a second four-year fill on the property. They did do one of these about four or five years ago that has enabled them to actually get, uh, a, a septic. So they're now gonna propose a second one to, so that they would hopefully get a backup area, which is one of the township's concerns, um, with this property. Carol, uh, the township engineer, Ms. Schuler has been in contact with their engineer, told their engineer, uh, basically what she needs to see in order for her to say, yes, this is gonna work. Give that recommendation to the board. So far, um, they have provided, uh, Ms. Schuler with, um, a plan showing where this proposed second absorption area, this backup absorption area, is going to be, um, installed and showing that it meets all the various dimensional requirements. What we, uh, they've also have agreed verbally, uh, to putting a deed restriction upon the lot that would protect this backup area to ensure that it is not disturbed or destroyed over the years and remains available, uh, to become the primary area if necessary. What we are currently missing is we need a report, uh, from the applicant's soil engineer, basically showing that the soil that they are going to use in this four-year fill is appropriate for this sort of activity. So, this is back in front of you. The hearing is scheduled for Monday to, you know, basically, thirteen days from now, um, the fourteenth. And so the question before you is, uh, do you wish to continue to oppose this? Is what the applicant, uh, provided sufficient for the township to drop its opposition? Or, uh, something in between? Such as, um, you continue your, your opposition until they provide a soil report to the township engineer that she finds satisfactory? At which point, you know, I could either continue to appear at the hearing, but not, not opposition, but just to ensure that these conditions of approval are put in place or write a letter, um, to, to that effect. So that's really the, the question that's currently in front of the board.
If Carol were to receive the soil report in time and it was to her satisfaction, and you wrote a letter that would go to the zoning hearing board solicitor, Joe Coles, correct?
Yes.
Would he have to abide by those conditions? Or?
No, the zoning hearing board could always decide not to. But even if I appear, they could decide not to, you know, abide by those. And even if we opposed, they could decide that the applicant has made out an appropriate case and grant the variances as, um, as required.
So what would the benefit of still sending you and we could just do a letter?
If the, you know, I would recommend a letter and then I'd want a letter also from the applicant's attorney, basically saying, we don't oppose any of these things. That would be the other advantage. You know, if we can't get that letter, the advantage of me showing up is just to make sure that the deal goes through, for lack of a better term. But yeah, certainly a letter would be cheaper for the township, would be easier for me. I certainly would appreciate it. But that being said, if you rather have me attend, I'm available and willing to attend.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I, I think if you have a letter from their attorney agreeing to our conditions, I would be satisfied with that and have the soil letter arrive in time. But I will still say, for me personally, I am very concerned that we are considering putting on lot well and septic on a piece of property less than one acre when our zoning says two acres. So, I'm just saying that. And I would also like the person building the house and the person living there to understand that. Maybe we can put that, just a disclosure in, in our letter and be understanding that, yeah, you got, if it happens, a lot of really big waivers that we don't normally do. And if anything happens there, you're gonna have a holding tank.
I think, I think we actually discussed doing, um, the chapter one twenty disclosure for the purchaser of the property to let them know about what was involved with getting them to that to that point.
Yeah, so they understand this, you know, they, they can walk in there, they can live there. But if anything happens with the septic or the well, it's on them to figure it out. We're not gonna just, the next day, run the sewer line down the road.
You know, when I brought this up on Girl Offroad, yous didn't care then. Well, we'll cross that bridge when it comes to that the system fails, when it had one site. Now, all of a sudden, yous wanna make a whole to-do over this for this one guy because you, you, you don't keep nothing fair in this township. Yous don't. You, you do something for this one and then this guy has to go through hell to do something. You gotta stop it here. It, it's out of control with this township.
I'm not quite sure I understand what the difference between the two were. I don't, I like-
You, you only had one system down there on Girl Offroad.
They had a lot more property.
And it was said, well, we'll cross that bridge if it fails when we, when that happens.
Well, they also had a lot more property and they, they've applied with-
It only had one system. And I said it should have two.
I, I remember you saying that, no doubt.
And then, nobody, no, nobody cared about it.
They had two acres.
It, it doesn't matter if they have a half an acre. I'm just saying, it, it, you gotta keep it fair though. It's, it's got to be fair here and it isn't. And I can go on and on and on. And I can keep bringing up more and more and more about it.
Well, I, I see Brian Hill on this call. And I'm not asking you to, I'd say anything, but I know what we've gone through with your property. And when you have less than an acre, that is tough. That is very tough.
That wasn't Brian's fault.
It doesn't matter whose fault it is. It's still tough.
It is tough.
And I just personally don't think we should be putting people-
But you had the opportunity-
I don't personally think-
You had the opportunity with the builder to put an interceptor down through there. And you know what? You fought that on, uh, with Ben up there. It's on Sovereign Station Road across the street there, Melbourne Hills. You fought that. And then you, you end up with two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and you think you made a lot of money when you left the one point four million dollar infrastructure.
I think we're getting off point. I think let's get back to the-
Yeah, I, I would agree. I would feel more comfortable we stop this conversation because it's, we're not gonna debate that issue again and, and-
We're not, so, uh,
No.
Our, our, I guess the question then that's still before us here is if we're gonna be sending Peter or not send Peter. I'm perfectly okay with Carol getting the soil test, Peter writing up the letter, getting the response letter from the attorney. Anyone have objection to that?
If, if the attorney does not agree to the conditions, would we like to send him in person?
I think that would be appropriate. You have an opinion about this one way or another?
No, that, that's fine. If we get the letter, everything we said. And if the attorney wants to fight that before the meeting, then Peter should attend.
Chuck?
I'm good with the option you discussed.
Okay, is this consensus or do we need to make a motion, Peter?
You, you, you need to make a motion since you voted the first time.
Could you spell it out for me? Give it a shot?
Yes. Motion to authorize my office to, uh, prepare, uh, a letter to send to the zoning hearing board regarding the two oh eight Schwenck Road application, wherein, uh, the letter would place conditions upon the applicant that they, uh, provide a four-year fill- upon the applicant that they provide a four-year fill to create a reserve absorption area on the property and that they provide, provide the township with the necessary information to ensure that this four-year fill meets our requirements. In addition, the applicant will agree to place a deed restriction upon the property protecting this reserve absorption area and will agree to provide the future purchaser of this home with a residential disclosure pursuant to chapter 20 of the Township Code. The township solicitor is also instructed to get a affirmation letter from the applicant's attorney agreeing to all these conditions. If these conditions are not agreed to, the township solicitor is still authorized to go and oppose this application.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Also move.
Second?
I'll second Chuck Yizer.
Supervisor Hexter makes the motion, Chuck Yizer makes the second, and before we vote, Brian Hill's hand is up. Brian, did you want to say something?
I do. Terry Sax, thank you so much for voicing your concerns. This is exactly what happens in this township. People get favoritism. This, this young man who talked about the trail, talked about his 21-year issue, this has been a 50-year issue on Zieglerville Road. This has been talked about since 1974 for some of the property owners along this, this stretch that don't have public sewer. This is a disgrace. You're worried about trails when you have a public septic issue along this street. Multiple homes who claim they don't have a problem do have a problem because their properties are much bigger than mine, and it's hidden. So I, this needs to be addressed. I've been in this house for 21 years, and I keep on hearing, we're not ready yet, we're not ready. You've had plenty of time with now multiple builders to give us the opportunity to connect and to help with the new septic system. This is an absolute disgrace that you've let this go. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you, Brian. I do believe that we have something in the works to run.
Yeah, but it's not going to be 21 years from now because at that point I may be dead.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda for this evening is another zoning hearing board application for 48 Perkiom and Avenue.
You want me to go over this also?
That would be great. Thank you, Peter.
Okay, so what we have here is an application to the zoning hearing board concerning 48 Perkiom and Avenue. The owners of this residential property are seeking relief to install a swimming pool, in-ground swimming pool upon their property, as well as, you know, looking at the plans, it looks like they're, they have a whole, they're remaking their whole backyard. And they are seeking two variances, one, one variance to allow a seven, sorry, 11-foot side yard setback for the proposed pool, and another variance to allow 31.6% impervious surface coverage. Looking at, if you give me two seconds, they originally did apply for a permit, that this permit was denied because it did not comply with zoning. So looking at the denial letter, the, the, this property is located in the R3 zoning district. The maximum impervious surface for this zoning district is 20%. Their property is currently at 22.9%, so it is currently non-conforming as to the maximum impervious surface coverage. They are seeking to increase it to 31.6%. Also, in this zoning district, pools are required to comply with the front yard setback for principal buildings and a 25-foot setback for side and rear yards. So instead of the required 25-foot setback, they are seeking a setback of 11 feet, 1 inch. And as always, the options in front of you is you can remain neutral, you can say you support or you don't support the application, you support the application or wishes, wish to impose conditions, or you can have me oppose this application either in writing or by appearing at the zoning hearing.
Carol, I have a question. How much of this additional impervious surface is, like the additional, like the decking and stuff, not the pool itself, but all the additional things they want to put in the backyard around the pool?
I'm afraid I'm at a loss because I'm not involved in this application and so it comes.
Okay.
Stormwater. My apologies.
That would be a Vinnie question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I'm just wondering how much of the waiver they need is because they want, for example, a 20-foot deck around it as opposed to maybe a 15-foot deck? Those are things I don't understand from the application.
So this is the, the three-house subdivision that B Team built not that long ago. So it's the middle house on that. So it's already, it was already above what was allowed on the impervious coverage.
Did they, did they add something to make that happen?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that was a variance that they had already received.
Right.
It doesn't change my opinion. I'm just pointing it out, this isn't an old property trying to come up to standards. It was just built within the past seven years, six years?
And, and we don't know if they need any additional stormwater planning.
If it's 1,000 square feet of additional impervious, they will need stormwater.
So that should be a condition.
Yeah, yes, it is over 1,000 square feet.
Okay.
The, the, okay, they're installing an in-ground pool, pool equipment with propane heater and surrounding concrete decking. Proposed size of total improvements will be 1,158 square feet.
This pretty much takes up their backyard.
Yeah, if you saw the pictures, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
It's pretty impressive.
So, so how is it only 33% then? It looks bigger.
No, I mean, I've.
Yeah.
Remain, remain neutral and allow the zoning hearing to do their thing.
Although not in an ideal situation, in the spirit of not wanting to seem unfair because we've had this situation before, I'm going to let the zoning hearing board make that final decision and remain neutral.
And I'm fine with that, we just need to be sure they comply with the conditions for stormwater management. So is that going to be obvious or do we need to make that a condition?
No, that, yeah, they're going to comply.
That's going to happen, okay.
If they trigger it, they will have to comply.
This is a consensus, this is a motion, correct, Peter?
Correct, yes, since you're not doing anything, yeah, that's fine.
Chuck, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Terry?
I do not.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we're going to move on.
Before we move on, I didn't want to kind of muddy the waters.
Okay.
I just want to let you know, and I, I believe this is probably because the applicants did not have an attorney. They've also, including asking for a variance and ask, and appealing from a determination of the zoning officer, which is completely appropriate, that's what they should do. They also have asked for a curative amendment and wanted to do an appeal for the determination of the zoning officer to this particular board, not the zoning hearing board. I need to talk to Jason about this, and then I probably will need to talk to the applicants and make sure that this was a mistake on their part. If not, then we are going to have to schedule hearings in front of this board to deal with those two applications.
Was it one of the ones that they, it looks like they checked off a bunch of things and?
Yeah, they checked off four things.
Yeah. Didn't look like they applied.
And so they checked off two, two items that fall, you know, in front of you and not in front of the zoning hearing board. I suspect it's because they don't fully understand what they're doing. You know, to be honest, a curative amendment is like lobbing a nuclear weapon. So I suspected they wanted to go there over a pool, but I need to check that out to make sure.
So we can still stand on our, on our consensus this evening, but.
Yes.
This is just a caveat that we need to be aware of.
I'm just giving you a heads up and hopefully you'll never hear about it again.
You'll be getting back to us on that. Okay, thank you, Peter.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so next up on our agenda is the Spring Mount Road Sidewalk Project, G and B Construction Group Final Payment Release. Carol?
That would be me, thank you. So the Spring Mount Road Sidewalk Project is complete, and before the board tonight is a recommendation for full and final payment in the amount of $142,620.75. The total project cost is consistent with the bid and contract price combined with the change order. Those two items summed to $304,802. The actual total construction cost being paid to this contractor, the sum of the two payment recommendations, is $304,573.06. So we're slightly under. Once this payment is made, the township would next submit payment information to the county and request reimbursement of $200,000 under the Montco 2040 funding agreement. So we have all the information from the contractor. We're actually waiting for final copies of their maintenance bond consent of surety contract or if David and release of liens that they're working on right now. So we're asking consideration of full and final payment contingent upon receipt of all final documents.
Okay, so just for clarification, this project was paid for partially under the grants.
Right.
Which is a reimbursement. How much, how long do you think it takes to get that reimbursement back?
I would think, generally, generally with grants, I, I can't speak to this one in particular because you've only done one project under it, but generally they're going to want to see the canceled check from the contractor. So there's that window of time, and then it goes before the county commissioners for it to be paid on that. And so it might be, you know, two or three months to get everything done.
Okay, that sounds about right. And the rest of this was paid for under our ARPA funds?
That was my understanding, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, any comments?
So should the amount in the.
So should the amount in the motion then be for the full amount?
No, the amount, you've already paid, you've already done payment one, so this is payment two.
Okay.
And so the amount in the motion should be to pay them $142,620.75.
Thank you.
Yes, we only, we already paid the 161,952, and the 142,620.75 also includes, includes the change order for 18396. Any other questions, any comments? Okay, so the motion is to authorize release of funds for payment application number two, final payment in the amount of 142,620.75 to G and B Construction Group Inc., verified by the Value Engineering Memo and Summary Sheet dated June 25th, 2025 for the Lower Frederick Spring Mount Road Sidewalk Project. Can I get a motion?
Also move.
I will second, uh, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll second, I'm drawing a blank here. Yeah, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is Lorraine Road Cul-de-sac Township Open Space Survey Authorization.
I can do this also.
Yes.
I'm finally earning my keep. This is a, a simple, quick one. We, the township has discovered that there are two properties in this, around the circle that appear to have swimming pools, fully or partially in township open space. Before, it's my recommendation, before we send letters off to these two property owners, we need to get the boundary line surveyed so we can specifically and correctly tell the property owners what is their property and what is our property, so that when we ask them to re, if one, if the, we are correct and these pools are on open space, when we ask them to remove them, they can remove them to an appropriate area, and it's not guesswork.
Are these property owners vaguely aware of the fact of this situation?
I, I do not know. I certainly haven't had conversations with them. I do not know if Jason or anyone else of the staff has.
Has it, you know, if anyone's had a, okay, okay. I, I, I do believe the one that the pool is clearly not on their property, I think they're aware.
I mean, the, the way I have done this in the past and the way I will recommend to Jason is before we go out and do the survey, once the survey is scheduled, we will forward letters to, not only to do these two property owners, probably ever going on the circle, stating what's going on and what we're doing. We are going to need permission, most likely for, for the surveyors to go on, in the backyards of these properties in order to correctly do their job. And so this is not something where people are going to wake up one morning and see people in the backyard.
No.
They're going to know about it, there's going to be a discussion.
So I understand the situation. I'm not quite sure, do we, do we need to survey the one when it's pretty obvious that they're not?
It, 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 it's obviously, yeah, our GIS or near map is not that far off, but like I said, they're going to want to move the pool into their backyard, and like we just discussed over this last zoning hearing board matter, there are setbacks for pools. And so for them to know exactly where the pool can go, we need to tell them where the property line is.
Does anyone have any questions, any comments? Okay, not seeing any. Okay, the recommended motion is to authorize the survey by the township engineer. Just want to read, I'm, I'm going to read part of what Jason has here real quick, just for clarification. If property corners and monuments were set in the development as they should have been, the cost to identify and stake the boundary lines for the two encroachment areas would be in the range of $1,200. If they aren't, Carol's estimated should be up to $2,200. So the cost not to exceed of $2,500 with the plan to come in lower. So the motion is to authorize the survey by the township engineer in an amount not to exceed $2,500. Can I get a motion?
Also move.
Supervisor Hexter makes the motion, is there a second?
No, I'll second Chuck Yizer, I'll second.
Supervisor Yizer makes the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our list is Township Code Open Burning, Chapter 50 Ordinance Advertisement to Adopt Authorization. I believe that we talked about just approving the ordinance and holding off on the advertising until we do our UNO.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you could.
Can we say advertise and then just put, kick it?
Well, you can auth, usually authorizing advertisement is, that's basically saying the ordinance is good to go.
Okay.
So you, you could authorize advertisement and then say, but we don't want to actually advertise it until we, we have the next ordinance up so they can be advertised together. That's perfectly appropriate.
So make it a condition of the motion.
So something like, I move to authorize advertisement for the Chapter 50 Open Burning Ordinance Amendment with the condition that it will be held for advertising until we approve the UNO ordinance update.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Supervisor Sax makes the motion. Can I get a second? I will make the second. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have resolution, non-uniform handbook update adoption.
I had one question on that, I think Terry had the same question, which we still need to resolve, and.
I have a couple of questions as well.
Maybe we can. Maybe we can push this the next meeting?
I, I kind of figure that because we still have some outstanding questions about some of the details on it, basically, the draft with, with Peter's edits, we had an informational last year, we went through it with Roseanne McGrath, our HR guru. There were some changes made in structure and tone, employment classifications, benefits, timekeeping, pay, leave policies, disciplinary system, legal protections, technology use, which is a new section, confidentiality, confidentiality in records and operational policies, but we obviously have some outstanding questions that maybe we want to get answered. So I think maybe we should table this. Does anyone have an objection? Chuck?
No.
Okay. So we are going to table that one for the time being.
Okay, and just, just for the public, I think the last time we had an update to our employee handbook was what, maybe 25 years ago?
Way too long ago.
Kind of before social media and everything, so yeah, we had a lot of updates to do.
Okay. All right, last item on our agenda for this evening is, pardon me, fire police request from Schwenksville. We received a request from Schwenksville Borough on the 18th for their 2025 events. We have the Schwenksville Summer Concerts at Meadow Park on July 16th, Schwenksville Summer Concerts at Meadow Park on August 20th, the Schwenksville Community Day on September 20th, the Halloween Parade for October 23rd, and the Santa on the Plaza for December 6th of 2025. The motion is to authorize the use of Lower Frederick Fire Company Police at the request of Schwenksville Borough for their 2025 events. I will make the motion, can I get a second? Terry Byrd makes the second, all of those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Okay, this is our time for public comment. Anyone have any comments?
Yeah, so I brought this up to you guys several times before, especially during the winter, explaining how the roads were going to have more damage come springtime. And we have that situation on Springmount Road, Main Street, and a lot of other roads throughout the township. I did see the pictures you had up there tonight, some cold patching was done, but, you know, cold patch isn't going to help. We're getting all this rain we have right now, we had it two days in a row, you're going to have traffic going over the roads, every place there's an alligator area, the water's seeping in, there's puddles everywhere. The one place I mention all the time is our bridge on Zieglerville Road, how the weep holes get clogged up and silled up against them, and then the puddle gets out further into the travel lane. So I know you guys have a, a financial issue as far as doing some other work this year. I know Carol Schuler had put out an equipment bid to have work done, and I think we've only used maybe a little less than half of that amount that was in the bid. So what I'm asking the board is, can we do some additional work this year? You stated tonight that the liquid fuels money is over $500,000. So what I'm asking is, since we have the equipment bid and there's still room on that bid, can we look into it and have some work done? You know, as everybody said, it takes a little time to put this stuff together, so it's not going to happen tomorrow. The next thing you know, it's going to be October, and the blacktop plants are going to be closed, or it's going to be too cold, or whatever the case is, the contractor could be tied up by then. So I'm asking you guys to take a consideration as to what's going to happen now. If you do nothing, okay, then next year it's going to get worse. And we all had a bombshell last year when we found out that Zieglerville Road in a two-phase, two-year portion was going to be between $500,000 and $600,000. As Ms. Schuler has told us before, if we're over $100,000 on roadwork, it's got to go to prevailing wage. We need to start spending a certain figure each year on this road out here, Main Street. I'm sure you guys have others, other people have called in. We have to do something, we can't, we can't sit back and wait.
Okay, so you and I had, excuse me, we had a conversation not too long ago, and you, you had pointed out some of those areas, and I apologize, I haven't gone out to go and look at them, but they're on my list, and I'm going to pass them on to Jason and see if he'll have the road crew go out and take a look at them, and we'll, we'll make an assessment on that, and then I can get back to you. Does that sound good?
That sounds great. It'd be nice if you could put something on the workshop meeting for this month, so additional conversation.
No promises, but I'll see what I can do.
I think you got some.
Okay, is there any other public comment? I see a hand raised on, oh.
Or you can go ahead.
Okay, for Brian Hill on Zoom?
Yes, thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak. With regards to the sidewalk commissioning, I'd ask that you make sure that both party commissioners for Montgomery County are either sent a letter or their offices are contacted such that they know they can put this on their calendar to attend that event when anything does occur. Thank you.
Good idea, Brian, thank you so much.
There's one other hand.
Warren, you have to unmute yourself. Okay, well, in the meantime, while he's trying to figure out that, Tim, you want to come up?
I just had a question. I had a question on Gerloff Road. What are your plans for Gerloff Road? Because you said that you're going to have the guy come out and spread more stone. He's done that four times. All the stones are in our parking lot. The one time he was out there with a salt spreader, shit, like putting screenings, shooting screenings all over the place. And then when the cars come up, all the dust comes out. And, and what I don't really understand is, how does the guy not put down too much tar? And what does that do to all the fish and the, all the stuff in the streams? Because I have tar literally two feet in my grass and stones. So I just was curious, how does someone let that happen? And why would he come back and spread stones on just a dry surface? Like I said, the, the, I mean, we couldn't understand what he was doing because he kept going back and forth, and dust was flying all around. I mean, it was bad. And I don't know what your plans are to resolve that, because whatever he did, it actually made the road worse. So I don't know if it's a matter of repaving or sweeping up the stones, like no one ever came through with a sweeper to, like, sweep up the excess stones. So that was my only concern, like, just if you could explain a little bit on what your plans are with Gerloff Road, because it's, it's pretty bad.
I think Carol actually spoke to it during her, her, your, your report, but is, is there something we can do about the excessive stone or?
So, so the, the stone is being applied to, I'm going to say soak up the emulsion, but that's not exactly what's happening. But the stone is being applied to be taken into the emulsion and to stop the bleeding from keeping, coming through. So each time they apply stone, we get less bleeding, and they need to keep doing that until it's not bleeding anymore. We may have one or, one or two more applications before that's done, and that's their, their fix for the problem we're having right now. They are going to come back in the late summer or early fall when things cool down and do repairs on that. They're actually talking about using micro-surfacing material for those repairs. I have an email with the contractor, this is not at our expense, they are standing behind their work, they realize we had a catastrophic failure of the application on that street, and they are covering it. They are doing this, so.
Is all of Gerloff like this?
I don't go down Gerloff too much, like, all the way, but it's really from, like, the bridge office, really bad.
So what, what, where, where the sun?
Where the sun hits it most is where we're getting it.
Okay.
They did initially sweep after the application, the first application, but right now they're trying to soap, soap, sop up that extra emulsion with stones. So we did talk to them yesterday about going back with a street sweeper and pulling in what's on the sides rather than continuing to apply new stone. They were going to look at whether they could do that for us. I realize it's dusty, I'm sorry about that. Nobody likes what's happening out there. It, it, it was essentially a failure on that road.
It's just an unintended consequence, an unfortunate situation?
It is. And, and we're not the only ones that had this. I've been in touch with municipal services at PennDOT, they've actually been putting out emails asking if other people had this problem with the extreme heat. They've had this problem on state roads with the extreme heat. So they're trying to investigate why this is occurring this year in a way that it hasn't before.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Yeah, Phil? Is this on Gerloff too?
Phil Smith 205 Gerloff, that's near the Limerick Township border on the other end from where Mr. Lynn Messer is. There's also an adhesion prop right out in front of my house the other day, and it was hot. The, the emulsion and the mix of stones has, you know, heaved up. Of course, that, I think, was made aware of to the township initially when I sent pictures closer to the Limerick Township border than our home, but, you know, there seems to be some kind of adhesion problem between what was originally put down and, you know, what, you know, I guess we have currently is a situation where that lack of, of tooth in the surface that it was put on to has not adhered well, and, and cars coming along in the hotter weather take clogs of that and sort of heave it up and then, like, make mounds along this, the road surface.
Yes, that's, that's exactly the failure we're talking about. So the, the step one is, is to get it dried up out there, and you're going to have those, those quads there for a little while yet alongside the holes. It's also bad down by the bridge, but they are coming back in the fall, and they're going to clean that up, and they're going to micro surf, micro-surface those areas just to get it all level again. So they will come back and fix it, they're doing it at their cost. So it, it will happen. In the meantime, your road might not be perfectly smooth for the next couple of months, but I'm hoping that we're about done with the dusting and chipping.
Yeah, well, the rain has helped immensely with that, but during the days leading up to the rain, it was kind of a health hazard. I mean, we basically had a haze in our whole area, and it was the stone dust over that hole. I guess 150 yards to either side of the road just lingering because there wasn't much of a breeze to blow it away, so.
Yeah, I, I can't guarantee that might not happen at least one more time.
It is what it is.
But, but, but in, in the end, they're going to make it right for us.
What happens with those crazy heavy rains that can happen with escarpment nights? Does that stuff just wash right off?
So the, the emulsion does not. The emulsion, the emulsion, the rain actually cools the emulsion, so the emulsion's not leaving with the rain. Now, could we pick up some fine stones? Possibly, yes, I don't disagree. But the emulsion, actually, the rain is cooling it, so it's not traveling. The, the reason it got picked up is it liquefied, it gets above a certain temperature and it liquefies.
Well, as I said, the, up to the rain events, you know, each time a car or truck, and sometimes we have semis come down that road, you know, there was a dust cloud generated by each of those vehicles that, you know, just makes it very unhealthy for people that are out and around their yards or whatever. So, you know, I, I do recognize that the rain has taken a lot of that dust out, and we don't have quite so much, but, you know, if they decide to put down more stone, we're going to be right back to square one, so. Thank you for addressing that issue.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Okay, we're going to take Warren, have you unmuted yourself? Okay, Bob?
Yeah, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that I had gone out and inspected Gerloff and Mine Hill, and it was actually a Tuesday here again, as I said, that's when our whitetail people come in and, you know, they're, they're using their tandem axle trucks on the road.
Mine Hill.
The asphalt emulsion is clogging up, so it's picked, the tires are picking it up, throwing it into a wad or whatever you want to call it, and then as everybody and their brother drives over it, it's getting kneaded back into position.
Did you say Gerloff and Mine Hill?
Gerloff, Mine Hill, and Yerga. I came in off of, I came in off of Mang.
Right. Up Delphi too, okay.
Around the corner, okay? It's all over the place, you can see it. So I, I don't know what's causing the issue. Obviously, it's, it's the emulsion, obviously.
It was those, it was those, it was those.
Marla, don't, don't interrupt.
Well, I can tell you what caused it, it was four days of 100-degree weather, that's what caused it.
Well, that's why you guys wanted to have the thing done early, you put the bid out early, and you went and spent the $200,000 on the tar and chip, so, you know, go there.
Okay, I think we're done with Warren. Is there any other public comment? Is there any supervisor comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Chief Cass for taking over the audiovisual duties tonight.
Congratulations, very good job, good job.
If you ever need a referral for Geek Squad or something, let me know. Good job.
Chuck?
Yeah, I, I think I got connected to the meeting a little bit late, but I just, you, you did announce we had an executive session, did you not?
Just going to get there because I forgot.
Okay.
I apologize, we had to.
That'd be great.
This evening before our meeting to discuss legal matters and real estate.
And of the comment, I'm available to talk to people about issues future and past, not running again, and I will definitely give you a straight answer and not leave any details out.
Okay, Marla?
Yes, I, mentioning the sidewalk project again, that project would not have been possible if we did not have the ARPA money. Those of you remember during COVID, every municipality in Pennsylvania, and I think a lot of them all through the country, got money from the government to do infrastructure projects, and it was based on population, and we got over half a million dollars. And we used that money well on a lot of infrastructure projects that we could never, ever have done within our budget. We have a small township, and our residents are very demanding on what they want to see, and we try very hard to deliver services. So having that extra bit of money to do things we couldn't have done was really terrific. So just consider going into the future as things get tough and things get more expensive. We do our best, but it is hard to do. So we want to thank, thankful for that infusion of funds and hope that sidewalk is well-used.
Okay, I do have a comment, but I'm going to refrain. I do see another hand up on Zoom, Brian Hill, did you want to say something, Brian? Oh, maybe he just left his hand up by accident.
Oh, yeah, sorry, my, my view button. Brian Hill, Levin, Ziegler River. I'd ask the township also to do surveys of some of the, the, many of our streets. Many of the dead ash trees are now being soaked, and I'm seeing many large branches falling. Some of these can be damaging not only to cars, but obviously to the street and roadways. This is something that we're going to be, have to deal with for many years, but we see many of these dead trees along the, the roadways throughout our township. So I'd ask if somehow, someways along the way, that that could be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, I, I tend to agree, maybe something we have to start looking at going into the future. Okay. Ernie, I wanted to ask you, how is the progress growing, going with the polling, the changing of the polling locations?
Just a juncture, I think it's in limbo. I suspect that both Area 1 and Area 2 will probably move to middle school west.
Both of them, so it's in limbo, but you would.
I think that's the indication I'm getting, like, you don't back it up with any information.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't matter the one way or the other.
Right, right.
But it will, I guess some people, you know, will get upset about it.
Okay.
It's whatever the county has to do.
Understood.
You know, the election board.
Okay, thank you, Ernie, because I knew that you had been kind of pushing that along. Okay, thank you so much. If I don't, is there any other supervisor comment? Okay, meeting is adjourned.